Mr. Cone, good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you? How are you doing?
Doing good.
Good.
Enjoy the life.
Yes, sir. Caitlin, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Benny wanted me to tell you, come anytime you want.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, everyone, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if y'all would stand please for Pastor Heath.
All right, if you would join me in prayer. God, we just pause at this moment to reflect on your grace. God, for this great country that we live in. Lord, thank you for all of our leaders. God, we thank you for the wonderful community, all of these that are here tonight for various causes. God, thank you for the unity that we have in Harrison. God, what a great place it is. Watch over it. Give us wisdom as leaders to represent the people with honor and integrity. And it's in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, be seated, please. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. You're all special, but we have a few special guests we want to recognize. First, we have Todd Anderson. Would you recognize some of your guys?
Thank you, Mayor Well. I have six young men here with us, five from Troop 60 here in Harrison and one from Troop 132, all working on different merit badges. So, we have citizenship in the community and communications. The citizenship into the community requirement says that they need to attend a public meeting where a difference of opinion is expressed and report on that. So, we're thinking maybe there may be an opportunity for a difference of opinion.
Good choice, sir. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We've got a couple of our court and court people here tonight. We've got Justice Glenn Redding and Justice Fred Wool. So, thank you guys for coming.
And Bobby Wood.
And Justice Bobby Woods back there. I asked Jeff, how many do we have? Have we found?
This is Jeff for you.
I can't rely on Jeff anymore. And I think Bob Largent has a special guest. Would you introduce him, please?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We're happy to have with us at the Chamber of Commerce this evening, this afternoon Brent Powers. Brent is the president of the Northwest Arkansas Democratic Gazette. Yes, that's that other paper. And thank goodness Jim Hollis. But Brent and his boss Walt Husman were over here about three weeks ago when he rolled out a digital copy of the Democratic Gazette. It's now available to everybody on digital, you know, on, because they no longer print them. Brent's here. We're talking about opportunities that we can work together with the chamber and with the Democratic Gazette. Great opportunity for him to meet the community.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Welcome, Brent. All right, I guess we'll go ahead and get started, folks. We've got a lot to cover tonight. This is a committee meeting, so the committees will be running the meeting. And Joel, you're first.
We've got a planning commission recommendation, a rezone request for 10, or 1610 North Highway 65, and also alley right of way abandoned right over here by the Harvest Bank.
Yeah. And Wade, you might want to explain tonight. I met with Coleman today. Coleman, you in the audience? Yeah, you're back there. He wanted to know all about the new radio station that's coming to town. So, you want to share that?
Okay, the rezone request is actually for Kubota. It's going to put in a new dealership in town north of Airport Road. The ownership of that company is actually called KNWARE. So, the planning commission went through the process to review. They have passed it on to council with the recommendation to rezone from agricultural, or A1 suburban agriculture to C3 general commercial. There were a handful of comments as we went through the process, but nothing of any concern. Most of it had to do with once development actually started to, started to go out there to make sure we were in compliance with FFA and airspace regulations, since it is next to the airport. And I can go ahead and explain the alley right of way. This is one where we're going to need to pass a resolution in order to schedule a public hearing. We are proposing to hold that public hearing in the, at the March, yeah, the March regular business meeting at six o'clock, just ahead of the business meeting. You know, if this is something that council is acceptable to, we'll provide a draft resolution ready to go for the regular meeting later this month to get that public hearing scheduled.
Okay. So, I guess we're going to need a motion on the first one.
Motion to take it on to council.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Second one there, being the alley right of way. Have a motion on that one?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second by Wayne.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passed again. All right, thank you. Mr. Faggers?
Okay. In finance, Mr. Mayor, council, we have eight items to come before the council. The first item being the establishment of the franchise fee fund. I'm going to let Luke speak to that because it has quite a bit to do with city accounting versus standard accounting, and this is a mechanism to allow us to pay bonds. So, Luke?
I know there's probably a ton of information out there on the franchise fee fund. It's really today more of an introduction into what we're looking at. Whenever the police and fire tax was passed, as you all are well aware, the ordinance did not allow for payment of bond indebtedness. There are other ways to do that, and the establishment of a franchise fee fund would be one way to do that, and I believe that's our best way. We've talked to the bond attorneys. They feel like this is a very normal thing that happened. There will be several ordinances that would have to be passed in order to establish this and make sure that it is allowable. But that will happen over the course of the next six months, and we can get that, if we can get that established. I would like to establish it a little sooner rather than later, so we could maybe build up some of that funding. But we also want to make sure that we continue to give the same percentages that the police and fire has always received. It's just a mechanism, a way of paying those bonds without going back to the people to say, hey, please allow us to go and use this sales tax money for bond indebtedness. Nothing different. It's just, since it's not in that ordinance that was passed in 2015, we do have to establish a different way of paying for that. We can have more discussion of that at council meeting if you all would like. We'd need approval to go to council, and we could get some more information to you.
Okay, with that said, once again, all this will do is take money and basically restrict it to that fund, the same dollars. It's just designated differently from the general fund in the future. So, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So, a second?
Motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move it on to council. The next item is financials. Now, I'll ask Luke to stand up there. These are preliminary numbers. If any of you all saw the financials, there's a number of takeaways from them. The first takeaway in discussing this with the mayor and Mr. Fager is that we're in the black from a preliminary standpoint to begin, or as we end the year. Now, being through January and we're into February, there'll be a few other transactions, but Luke is kind of projecting that we'll be ahead of the, with the surplus when we get the final numbers. So, that's excellent. That's the first takeaway. The second takeaway, and you can see it up there, that our surplus in the fire fund is $589,000 almost, and current surplus in the police fund of $271,000. And that speaks to the frugality of our departments and, as Luke has said, to try and build up funds for construction later. So, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, the $54,000 that you see in there is a surplus. I caution you, it's not exactly $54,000. We did receive a $50,000 grant right at the end of the year that will have to be paid out mostly in this year. That's for the Wonder Villa Park that I know Chuck worked on a lot with Quanah's, not Quanah's Rotary. And so, they've done a lot of work there. So, great to have that in there. It just might skew the number just a little bit. But, you know, even taking that away, we still have a little bit of a surplus, and that doesn't include about $20,000 that we're going to get in franchise fees in addition to that. Now, again, as you mentioned, we can't close our books until February 29th this year. So, there may be some stragglers come in that go into last year, but we should still end up in the black, which is great. You mentioned a little bit earlier about, you know, police and fire and street funds and all these others in the black. It's great. It's a testament. If you actually compare it back to 2019 budgets, everybody's up over what was budgeted. Whether they budgeted a surplus, it's still higher than that. So, hats off to all the department heads. They always do a great job, but we've kind of got away from the mindset of you have to spend it or else you'll lose it. And we've been working on that for several, several years, and these guys get it. And so, kudos to them. We appreciate it. Makes my life a lot easier when everybody do that. So, we also are trying to save money, and so that helps. And we really feel like we've got a good base to put down on the new facility that we've been discussing.
Mitch, would you scroll back up to the top for a minute? I want to point something out, because we were, when Luke came up yesterday afternoon, Luke came to the office with the good news, because we were expecting we were going to be a little down. We didn't know how much, but we thought for sure we would. And even when you take away the 50, we're only 4,800 up, but that's up rather than down. And then, when you go up to the top, you see those items that we listed there. Those were not in the budget. Those were surprises along the way, plus the major sales tax takeback. And that amounted to how much?
It's 87 up there. It was actually, I believe, in total closer to, closer to 100.
So, when you go through that whole thing, you nearly have $200,000 in surprises that happened last year. That was somewhat beyond our control. And you add that to, and then we had a deficit budget of 154, and we still come out, you know, in the black. That was, that really says a lot. So, you know, I'm real happy, and I agree with him. I think the department heads, I tell you what, the department heads know their numbers. They know their numbers better than you do. They really do. And that really says a lot. So, good deal.
Do want to also mention, the fire department took over the code enforcement section. I did tell Mitch that I would bring this up. You know, it's, they took that over in mid-year. We had budgeted, I believe, $20,000 more than what's already been, or what was expended in this year. So, we told them that we could potentially give that to them to help offset some of the costs that they took over. So, I think we need to at least discuss that at some point in time to see what we could move over. Maybe that's after final numbers, when we finally get a true number. But that information is out there, and we'd like to at least discuss it again.
Okay. Any, this is for information only. Any comments or questions at all? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, the Crooked Creek restoration update and funding. In your package, you saw a proposal or comments in regard to, and I'll let Wade speak to this. I didn't have an opportunity to speak with Wade on several of these next items, but in regard to this specifically, his expertise will be needed.
Okay. I'm pretty much just going to hand this over to Arkansas Game and Fish. I do want to point out one update on the information I sent out. The funding request has gone from 15,000 down to 10,000. So, that's what we'll be talking about tonight. And with that, I'll introduce Darrell Bowman with Arkansas Game and Fish, and he's going to kind of bring you up to date as to where we've been and where we might be going.
Thank you. It's good to see the council again. It's been several months before, since we talked to you last time. Again, with me is our Arkansas Game and Fish Commission's stream experts, Tim Burnley and Sean Saunders. Tim oversees our stream team program and our trout habitat program, and Sean is our stream team coordinator for this part of the state. They're actually the guys on the ground working with our partners on this. I'm just an administrator and sort of spokesperson, trying to help communicate this thing. And I'm going to, what I want to do is just as quickly as possible, just review how we got here, where we at tonight. And then, I'm going to hand it over to our partners, Joy Wasson, who has a local connection, and we're glad she's part of this, and John Chapman. They have become the technical lead for this project. And Joy's going to share a lot of information with you to tell you where we are, where we need to head next if Harrison chooses to pursue the project. And when Joy's done, you'll see why she's part of this project, some tremendous expertise. If I may, could I ask Ken Reeves just to tell us quickly, Ken, how this, how Arkansas Game and Fish Commission in Harrison started this discussion?
Sure. Thanks, Darrell. Before I start, I want to say kudos to the Boy Scouts here. I spent a lot of years in Troop 132 and in Troop 60. I got figured up this a little over 60 years ago. I did that, but I'm glad to see there's still young men in the Boy Scouts. My hats off to the scoutmaster. As I told you a minute ago, I remember my scoutmasters. I really think they made a difference in my life. But as far as how we got here, I really think, I mean, there's been discussion now for quite some time about Lake Harrison and the issues with it. But I think it was all brought to a head when we lost John and Amy Blines. So much attention was focused on the creek and on Lake Harrison. And I know I was down there with our dive team, and they really thought those bodies would be found in Lake Harrison. That wasn't the case. But that's when I think everybody really got this back on their mind again. Somewhere along the way, though, there, the mayor asked me if we had any expertise in this, in this area that could help. And it turns out that we do. And we've got the experts here. I'm not one of those. I just happen to be on the Game and Fish Commission right now, and I've lived here all my life, and I've fished Crooked Creek before the flood, right there. But I would ask you, as you consider this, to remember, and I'll say this, I love Lake Harrison. I love looking at Lake Harrison. I was very much in favor when we decided to do it. But I'll have to confess, it's turned out to be a disappointment to me in many ways. But that's not the decision tonight. The decision tonight's not, you know, whether or not to take the weir out. The decision is whether or not to take this next step to do what I think is called a 70% engineering study. Is that the term you use?
30%.
30% engineering study.
I like 70 better, but...
Yeah, well, I did too. It turns out that if you decide to do that, you will learn enough about it to have a good idea of what the cost is going forward and what it'll look like. Most of the people I've, I've heard comments, said, man, I love to look at Lake Harrison. Looks so great coming off Harrison. Hell, it does. And their concern is, if you do this, what's it going to look like? And I know that's your concern. We all care about that. But our goal, the commission and the nature of conservancy, is to help you get enough information to make a really good informed decision someday, whenever you decide to do that. Now, I think there's five reasons that you ought to move forward now, and I'll give you those very quickly. One is the cost. Lake Harrison is, wiers are sediment factors, and you obviously, you have to clean it out in two or three years. And I'll say Wade has done an incredible job of getting this done at a very low cost to Harrison because he was able to time it with events that qualified for like FEMA funds or whatever. That may not always be the case. And I think if you look way down the road, this is going to be potentially $100,000 a year that you're going to have to accrue to do this over three or four years. And what do you got when you get through it? Same thing. It didn't enhance it any. It's just back to collecting sediment again. The other is health. The geese, everybody knows the problem with the geese. Game and Fish Commission, we get contacted about this all over the state. Geese like calm water and people feeding them. And, you know, I think we all know that water's got to be dirty with those geese in there constantly. And I envisioned Lake Harrison being something where the kids would be out there swimming and playing around in summertime, people sitting on a bike with a fishing pole and a bobber. You know, the warm months, when you'd really do that, it's pretty nasty. It's just hard to do it. Safety, and Darrell can probably elaborate on this, but in the course of this, I've gone to, I've gone to a few meetings and read some stuff. Wiers are considered drowning machines. And if a person happens to go over one in a high water situation, you get caught in this undertow, and you're probably not getting out. I know I floated one time and saw a canoe go over a low water bridge on a buffalo, and it stayed down for a while, and suddenly popped out. So, we've been lucky, maybe the last 27 years we hadn't had that happen. The other, number four, is flood control. There's been some discussion about this being, that weir be a good flood control. That can't be true. If you've got a bowl, and the idea is to hold water, keep it from getting over the levee in the city, it doesn't help to start off with a lot of water in the bowl. It's kind of like your detention ponds. Your planning commission requires them subdivisions. They don't want them staying full of water all the time. They want them empty, so they'll catch that water. And the other thing, and I think this is really important, right now, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will pay, apparently, maybe all the cost of taking that weir down and the low water bridge below it, because it also is a barrier. This money may not be available forever. It's available right now if you decide to do this. And I think it probably tells us something that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is spending millions of dollars all across the nation, helping people take out wiers. Apparently, they're, they're pretty convinced that they're not the right thing to have. So, anyway, I appreciate your attention, and I hope our presenters here enlighten you enough that you can make a really good decision. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you, Ken. That's exactly what I needed. So, real quick, to talk about your proposed project, just to go overview and talk about low head dams in this, in this nation, there's, there's, there's a lot of reasons low head dams are a problem. Mainly, it's dilapidated infrastructure. Across this country, low head dams have been put in. I'm not talking about Lake Harrison Dam. Think about just old mill dams, and dams have been gone in for all kinds of reasons. Those, most of that went on earlier in our, in the last century even. And now, they've become aged structures, and now, especially on the East Coast, West Coast, and now reaching the Midwest, we're dealing with these old low head dams that are, that are, that have become real problems. Safety, as Ken said, is a huge part of it. Those low head dams across the country are the source of drownings for a few different reasons. Long-term maintenance, dams trap sediment and don't let sediment transport through the stream system like it normally would, which is a problem. So, there's always associated problems with sediment buildup. And we and Joy will, will have more detailed explanations of that. And then, replacement costs for ones that are thought to be functional. I got a laugh already. For these low head dams that are still serving their purpose, and they, again, they're aging, replacing them is often extremely expensive versus just removing them. Because of this issue, this dilapidated infrastructure and more and more attention to safety and problems because more and more people are getting out on streams and rivers these days, everybody has their own mountain bike, everybody has their own kayak. Well, do you want them coming down the stream? And again, I'm not talking about Lake Harrison Dam as much. It's just picture these low head dams out on rivers around. Someone doesn't know they're coming, and all of a sudden, you've got a problem. So, for these reasons, I and we and Joy and a few of us here in Arkansas in Natural Resource Management, a few years ago, saw this coming. More and more of us were getting more calls about issues like this, like Harrison. And we, we decided that these projects are, are pretty large scale often. They're pretty complex. We need to work together on them. So, we formed something called the Arkansas Stream Heritage Partnership. So, Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and a bunch of other state, federal agencies and non-governmental organizations got together and formed this partnership just to work on the stream barrier issue, old low head dams, road crossings, things that need to be replaced. And it's not a regulatory issue. It's not an attack issue. It's a, it's really more of a opportunistic issue. If a dam, we don't have a project unless a dam owner needs to do something and needs help. So, we formed a partnership to be able to work together to address these problems. And the justifications are right there, just like Ken said, safety. Often, we can improve recreation and aesthetics, improve tourism and economics. Tourism's our second-leading industry in the state. Tourism's very important to Harrison, Buffalo National River, all that. And for us ecologists and biologists, those of us sitting over here, what's important to us is restoring the biological function of the stream system, the genetics of populations of organisms, the sediment transport, all that. So, you get the idea. When we formed the Arkansas Stream Heritage Partnership, as it turns out, I was working at another state agency as the director of Arkansas Natural Heritage Commission. My boss, Stacy Hurst, answered directly to the governor of Arkansas, and I needed her support, his support, to get this effort started. And sure enough, this worked into the governor's plan when he came in. He had a strategic plan for the state. And for these reasons, the Arkansas Stream Heritage Partnership, working on the issue of removing barriers from streams was important under the governor's plan. Now, here's an example. So, you're not alone in addressing these issues. This is Mine Creek Dam, which is half on a private landowner and half on the Washita National Forest, put in illegally several decades ago by a private landowner. And we found it through satellite imagery, didn't even know it was out there. That dam, as of last week, oh, just as an example, this is what low head dams do. That's at summertime low flow. Look at all the sediment built up on the backside of the dam, front side of the dam, depending on what terminology you want to use, the upstream side. That sediment always builds up. You know, you've had to clean it out of Lake Harrison. In this case, if these dams go unmaintained, sediment builds up. The water has to go somewhere. The capacity's lost, so it pushes out around the sides. And there's that dam got blown out a long time ago, and it's not being maintained. This dam needed to come out of this river. The Costalk River is what the Mine Creek is flowing into, right there on the left of that picture. And that's one of our state wild and scenic rivers. That is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Fish Passage Program. Week before last, they came into town from, one of them's in Mississippi, one of them's in South Carolina, and they removed that dam, working with us, Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, and Washita National Forest. What Ken was talking about, they offer a grant to do this work just for the dam removal. Now, Harrison, we're going to have to do a lot of restoration work. Not talking about that. But the dam removal itself, they have a 50/50-ish matching grant. And the match, from our side, Harrison or Game and Fish Commission, us partnering on the project, can be in-kind work. Dump trucks, Tim, Sean, Joy, John, their time. We actually could put our equipment to work. Harrison could put their equipment to work. So, that's the point. They're not going to come in and do this free of charge, but it's a grant that we can take advantage of and match up, and it might be of no cash out of pocket. It might be just using our equipment and our people. But they pulled that dam out two weeks ago, and there's a free-flowing stream. So, it just gives you an idea of a project like this. Central Arkansas Water has three dams like that on the Maumell River. This one, like a lot of low head dams, was built to be a road crossing on top of it. And you see the hazards and the things we're talking about? That's actually a video. I won't trouble you with that. But there's that dam coming out a few months ago, and that bridge, that's last week. They're replacing it with a bottomless culvert bridge. You guys might remember, Sean Saunders gave us an explanation of that. So, that kind of bridge lets sediment and water transport down the stream. It lets fish pass. It lets aquatic organisms maintain their genetic diversity. That's the kind of structure we need when we have a road crossing or some need to cross the stream instead of a, a low head dam, low water crossing, like a slab crossing. That's just an idea, gives you an idea of two projects. Those things were much simpler than the potential project we have out here, because those aren't in the middle of Harrison, Arkansas, as a focal point, and they don't have all this infrastructure associated with them. So, way different animal, but the point is, removing the dam is a very doable project. And again, this example, it's coming to us more and more. Everybody's having problems. Everybody's having problems with these things. There's the, the picture of the safety aspect. This is right out of the Arkansas Boating Manual, Boating Safety Manual, and in that paragraph right there, if you could read it, it says, "Low-head dam is called a drowning machine." The current off the backside of that dam at some, at some river level becomes very dangerous. In Arkansas, what I see happening a lot, War Eagle, I'm from northwest Arkansas, War Eagle Mill, and again, I'm not attacking War Eagle Mill Dam, but all of you know that place, one of our icons in tourism, beautiful place, but that dam killed a friend of mine in high school. My dad and his dad found him in the stream, downstream. And last fall, a gentleman died there in both times, it was a canoe going over, don't know if they didn't know it wasn't there or what, but that is what did it to him, getting caught in that recirculating current. And the problem is, is that gentleman that died a few months ago, in the newspaper, it was called a boating accident. There wasn't a line said, "This is a hazardous low-head dam situation." So, we don't, we don't, we're not, we're not educating and communicating real well on the issue either. States like Pennsylvania, Indiana, Iowa, as examples, have programs now, state-level-funded programs that are removing low-head dams around those states. And in Arkansas, I'd just like to point out, and across southeast and probably the country, we have a whole lot of low-head dams that are effectively low-head dams that we call slab road crossings. Same thing, sediment builds up, the stream blows out the sides, the county or whoever owns it has to keep making the thing longer, maintenance costs long-term are problematic, and it's, and it's got all these other problems with it. And so, that brought us to Lake Harrison. We formed the Stream Heritage Partnership, we, professionals in stream restoration have been, started dealing with this issue, and then Ken Reeves brought this to us last year. It ended up on my desk because I supervise our experts, and I work with Joy and our other partners in this partnership. So, we started this conversation. What, what happened? Well, when we started this conversation, the dam looked like that because the dam doesn't have any, inadequate water control structure for rapid drawdown, so you had to dig out around the sides when those poor folks were being searched for. And this conversation started, we met with you and, and in this room, in three different occasions, in three different formats, and we got your approval to move forward to where we are now. And that is, we said we could develop a plan for you to then consider and understand what the big project would be, complete with costs and some, and a lot of details to what it would look like. And that is where we got to. In doing so, this is, again, this is a big project, this is complex, this isn't something normally that Sean or Tim would deal with. Normally, we're out dealing with a private landowner, a farmer, with an eroding stream bank, smaller scale, manageable, not a lot of infrastructure, not high-profile, and, and we don't have to be as technical or worried about it. Right here in the middle of Harrison, we gotta be much more cautious. So, I went to the Arkansas Stream Heritage Partnership, and you'll see the list of the partners involved in this project now that have already invested to this point, and most importantly to mention are, again, our stream team program, Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, you, the city, but the Fish Passage Program with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the leader for the southeast is Tripp Bolton. If we ever get to this project, he'll have to be in his federal budget cycle and see how this project works. It is competitive, but Tripp has continued to be on board, as I've kept him informed about this project, he wants to be part. So, Harrison will have the opportunity to apply for his matching grant, we will, we would help, help you through that, we would jump in with our in-kind match along with Harrison, and see how we could take advantage of that particular partner. And then, most importantly, the Nature Conservancy, Joy Wasson has a connection here, and this is what she's become an expert at, and John Chapman, they wanted to join in, and they have become our lead in the technical aspect of this project. So, in just a minute, I'm gonna let Joy take you there, okay? But that's what we did, we got a bunch of partners together to start to help you with this. There's Sean Saunders, using a high-tech piece of equipment that Chairman Ken Reeves thankfully approved the purchase of last year. That little aquatic drone was an $80,000 piece of machinery that can map out that, in this case, the stream bed and lake bed where Lake Harrison is. The aerial drone with TNC was used to get the rest of the data and the surrounding landscape. Did all our survey work, and did the analysis, and got to this point with a conceptual restoration plan. And that is John Chapman's resulting, just overview of the data that was collected. Those are contours on the land and the contours under the water of the existing situation. And that is what Joy is gonna talk about next. There's the conceptual, just, just crude first run of where the stream bed might lay, and again, that's what Joy's gonna talk about. To make the point, what, what I said we would do is get to that part, the conceptual plan. Again, in projects that we normally do, our stream team, Sean and Tim, in our program, we're working with a landowner and a smaller-scale project, and that's, that's good enough. That plan is where we end, and we start looking for funding and making our decisions. This is different, but to get to that point, us and the Nature Conservancy, as of last August, had spent about $35,100. No charge to Harrison, we did that and got this plan developed, that's what we said. But here's the difference is why we're here, and this is where my hand over Joy, what we realize is, this is way bigger, way more technical of a project, there's infrastructure and other where true engineering comes in. Wade has to and knows how to deal with engineering projects, and we all agreed that that conceptual plan is just not enough for you to make your decisions on. Wade needs, we want you to have a 30% engineering plan, and that's why we came back and said, "Hey Harrison, we need to, we need to, let's, let's get together, let's pay for this," to get you the proper level of plan that you need. Joy's gonna tell you about that.
All right. Thank you Darrell.
Ken thanked Joy and John Chapman enough for the great partnership they're bringing up this. You're gonna see why.
Hi. How are y'all? Thanks for having me. My name's Joy Wasson, and I work for the Nature Conservancy, and John Chapman is my colleague that works out of Fayetteville office, I work in Little Rock, grew up here. But, and I'm here probably because between 2010 and 2015, I led, designed, and constructed, and built a very large-scale restoration project in the city of Clinton. So, I think several people suggested it would be good for you all to have some visuals of what these projects look like once they're complete and to boot. Clinton's been complete for multiple years, so you can see quite a bit of vegetation growth, and I know that's been a question. So, I'm gonna talk about that, but, but Ken really hit the nail on the head, is that, you know, we're here to, and I'm here to give you all, all of the realistic cost and information that you need to make a decision to move forward. And so, I'll talk about, that's why I call this decision points, because you have multiple decision points, and when you have a project that's complex like this, it's kind of nice to lay that out and see how that actually works on the ground, because it's a multi-year process. I don't know if you all know who the Nature Conservancy is, we're not a government organization, we're a nonprofit organization, and I lead our river conservation program, and I've been working there for 15 years, and for 15 years, we have been doing nothing but designing and building these type of projects. The thing I like to point out, if you, where am I pointing to here? Here. Okay, the thing I like to point out about our organization, and maybe why some of you have not heard about us before, we are a non-confrontational environmental organization. We work with everyone, and you'll see in, in my Clinton project, our main partner was Southwestern Energy, and we've been working with them for years on Fayetteville Shell issues. We're science-based, and of course, we, we respect the community, so ultimately, I want you all to be able to make a good decision. These concerns were already mentioned, but I wanted to lay out the concerns, both of how the current situation is, and also about if we were actually to remove the weir, there's a lot of concerns already about that, so I wanna make sure and address all of those while I'm here. So, I've listed these out, I won't read through them, everybody's kind of talked about it already, but there's multiple issues with the current status, and that's what's brought us here today. There's also concerns about what, what will happen if we do take the weir out, and so, here are some of the, some of the feedback that I got from your leaders about what concerns have been raised so far. How will it look? There is a concern, people, a lot of people remember what the creek looked like after it was dredged, but before the lake was built, and words like "willow jungle" and "Braida Channel" have been used, and it was very unsightly, and a maintenance issue. And, and so, we'll talk about that, it's the same issues that the city of Clinton dealt with as well. Spending money to undo what was previously done, and concerns for spending general funds for that, increased chance of flooding both downtown and downstream, and I think Ken pointed out why that's actually not the case in this situation, because of the sediment backlog. And then, fears of a land grab by regulators is something that I've heard, and I just wanted to mention that because it is a concern, and to my knowledge, this project has no land acquisition related to it at all, so. So, here we are, we have an issue, and to me, you have three options. You can maintain and repair the dam and lake over time for the foreseeable future, or these other two options, which is investigating, removing the dam with this partnership, or you do have the option of, if you had the financial means, to contract this out completely to an engineering firm. The pros and cons to that with, I'll kind of outline here. So, let's just take the first one first. If you maintain, can just decide, you know, we're just gonna maintain and repair the dam and lake. You have your lowest short-term costs, that means next year or in the next five years, you're not spending any money other than dredging. You might have high or rising long-term costs though, so not just the continual dredging that occurs, but these, this infrastructure have lives, and so, eventually, you know, there's, Wade's let me know, there's no major renovations that you've had to do to the weir yet, but they do have a lifespan and need repair. And then, higher risk, and because your problems continue. If you go with a partnership, potentially, you can have a lower short-term cost by, like Darrell was saying, match contributions from agencies like the Fish and Wildlife Service and Game and Fish Commission, you'll have a low long-term cost. You'll have lower risk for drowning and dam failure, but with a partnership approach like this, it's likely to be a longer process. So, finding the funds through grants, that all takes time, and when you have multiple entities working together, it tends to, to be a longer process. If you were able to just contract this out with an engineering firm, your short-term costs are gonna be higher, and I'm gonna go over that a little bit. With projects like these, and Darrell mentioned a little bit about this, but they're complex in the sense that you need hydrology engineers, biologists, botanists, you have replanting plan, you have contractors, just earthwork, so there's a lot to manage. And when you've got a partnership with different skillsets and, you know, state funds to help with that, it, it makes it more streamlined. If you have just the engineering firm leading that type of cause, you've got engineers and hydrologists doing it all, and they charge a lot for all of, all the planning, all of the extra, so that kind of goes back to the higher short-term cost. Again, you've got the lower risk, you've lowered the risk for the city through drowning and dam failure, and possibly a shorter turnaround if you were able to just spend, spend the funds on it upfront. So, now, let's just take that option of, if we go forward, this is the decision that you guys are trying to make tonight, is moving forward with what's called a 30% design, and this term has been passed around a lot, and I'm sure it's confusing, so I wanna just define what that is, and that essentially is gonna give you your accurate cost estimates. So, I'm gonna throw some range of costs around today, and they are not defensible. It's not defensible until we get to this 30% design case because we have considerable infrastructure and flood modeling to do, to make sure that we know what needs to be put in place. The other good thing about 30% design, and this is kind of typical in projects like this, to do iterative designs, and one of the reasons is, we come to you with a 30% design, and that has two or three options, so it gives you a choice. So, we don't come to you with a final design and you say, "Wait a minute, we don't, we don't like that, we need this." And when you come with two or three options, that's something that you can actually take to the public and get some input and get some choices to choose from, from that point. So, that's why a 30% design is beneficial to do initially. You're gonna do the same process if you go through an engineering firm. Now, 30% design also affords you to do a little bit of investment, and then you can always decide, "That's not the route we need to go, we need to go right back to maintaining and repairing the dam and lake." And so, you have not spent too much money to come back to that decision that you feel is best. If you decide to move forward, that's when you would go into applying for funds, like Darrell was talking about, through grants, building community support and getting feedback, and then developing any of your park and trail plans to complement the design. Then you can go forward with two components being complementary. And then, again, you can still choose to go back to maintaining and repairing the dam and lake if you can't raise the funds, or you can't get community support. So, it's just decision points. And then, if you decide to move forward, you would then go to the 60% design, which essentially, it's the flood analysis, the permitting, it makes your project shovel-ready. You can still, at that point, although most people don't, by the time they get to 60% design, go back to your do-nothing approach. If you wanna go forward, then you just address any funding gaps that you may have at that time. You move forward, the 100% design goes along with construction, so that's a, that's a package deal, is implementing construction, and then you have a post-construction period that's managing the project of one to five years, and that's vegetation, and then should we get floods and have some damage, that's the time period that we go in and do any repairs. So, and I also want this to be an open discussion, so if you have questions as I'm going through this, please speak up and I'll address them as best I can. So, I wanted to put this up here because as a designer, I need to know what are the objectives. As many objectives as there might be, I need to know all of them upfront, so that I can, I may not be able to satisfy all the objectives with my design, but I can try to satisfy as many as possible. And then, I can even, in those two to three options, you can say, "Well, we really want a fishing pier, or we really want, you know, X in our design." And we can say, "Okay, but then that's, this is the cost," you know, so you've got decision points again. If I don't, if we don't agree on the objectives, or an objective comes up later, that's usually a problem from a design's perspective. So, these are the ones that I have identified, just hearing and learning about this project, that if we were gonna start designing tomorrow, we want to first improve safety, second, we want to evaluate all the costs and minimize our long-term costs. Then, of course, we want to maintain the flood capacity and the protection that was provided by all of these previous projects to begin with, and improving public access and recreation and aesthetics, and then, for organizations like us, this, and people who like to fish, this can also improve fish passage and fishing habitat. Have I missed any? Okay. We've talked a lot about this already, but this is a map, an incomplete one of that, of all of the recent drownings from these types of structures. So, you can see, we're not alone in this issue. Let's skip forward because, okay, now, this is a layout of how the stream could lay on the landscape, and when we came with two or three options, you would see two or three options of this and be able to determine, you know, what, what questions does that raise, what issues does that raise, and again, that offers you the opportunity for feedback, and the feedback loop for the designs to be altered. So, now, I'm just gonna go through some comparable projects, give you some visuals and some cost estimates. and some cost estimates, so that you can kind of wrap your head around what this might look like. So you all might be familiar with the town of Clinton. It has two of the four forks that feed Gresham River Lake running right through downtown. In 1983, like almost every other river in Arkansas, they had the flood of record and put nine feet of water into downtown Clinton. From that, the community kind of had three options laid before them by the core engineers. They could either move all the businesses up on the hill, or they could dam one of the tributaries, which was very unpopular and high, it was the highest-cost option, or they could dredge and channelize three miles of the river for flood control. And so that's what they did. And they did that in '87. So by '87, they dredged the river and, skip forward 25 years, the river, well, I'll just continue. So this is Gresham River Lake, and let's see.
Doesn't work on the screen.
Don't work on the screen, okay. So you see all the sediment coming down, the south fork, little red right there, and the city's water intake is right there where the river comes into the lake. So they're having, they had to spend $3 million on a new clarifier. Sediment is an issue, and the project, the dredging project was just pumping sediment down into their water supply. They also had, so this is a typical condition of the Archie Fork, and something that, here's a visual of something we might build. So Crooked Creek, you might see areas of Crooked Creek like this. But it was our extreme boulder complex, and it's stable. That was not the condition in the city of Clinton. They had, as many of the described after the urban renewal project here, they had multiple small channels, braided channels, large gravel bar developments, and erosion on the outside banks. So the city came to us and said, is there something we can do with the channel and still keep flood capacity, but restore it back to the way that it was? In addition, there were some serious floodplain constraints over time, so there's more water going in less area. And here's a look at the first phase of the project. And so when the channel was dredged, it was designed to be a 100-foot-wide channel. And in 2010 here, it was 800 feet wide and growing. Many, many channels within that and the conditions that I showed in the previous picture. So, project goals, very similar to what we're talking about today. Maintaining flood capacity, restoring the aesthetics. The river was an eyesore for the city. They had a park there, nobody went to it. The river was wide and shallow and hot, very similar to the same, some of the same things that you were discussing, Ken. They were also losing a lot of property as well, which is not the case here. So the streambank erosion was an issue, and it was getting into people's property and several banks. And then, of course, for the nature concerns, they were looking to restore habitat from the fish and mussel species. So we, so I designed the channel to be back to the appropriate width and stabilize it while we get vegetation and grow. So here is after we have, after we're building back the bank and putting what we call erosion control matting, and replanting on the outside banks. Same area with a very beginning of spring growth, a couple of years later, we're getting growth. Now, I want to talk for just a second about vegetation, because I know that's something that can be confusing to picture. And I'm going to talk about willows and sycamore and alder and river birch as really great tools for restoration. But you may be thinking "willow jungle" in your mind. So what I want to show here is, when we build a structure like this towboat structure, and I didn't really explain the structure, but that's not the point. We, the place that we get failure is right after we build the project, when vegetation hasn't established and right on the face of the streambank. So you can see here, we have buried a bunch of root balls of willows here on that bank. And that is our, that is our first protection, right there is on the edge of the bank. We put in large transplants, and this is why, because immediately after you do construction, you're going to have a flood. And that was literally right after construction, and we had no visible erosion. So it's really important to hot-tip for the first five years to get that vegetation established. Then I'll talk about how you can maintain it in a park-like setting. So here, we're building it. This is right after construction. And as it grows through the years, what we want is for it to look like we have never been there in the first place. Now, this was on the private side of the project. This is a private land. This wasn't the park-like setting, which was on the other side, so I'll show that as well. But the, but the goal is to get stable banks. So you can see here that over time, right on the edge of the bank is where it's most critical to have that vegetation. Now, the city has done a lot in their, in their park area with their floodplain. So here, they have a pollinator meadow, trails that they've built around the restoration project, all the while working with the large trees and roots that are there. Roots in the ground is what we need. So they've built a disc golf course, some additional ADA trails, park amenities, both trails off and on ADA. There's our outreach sign on the project. But this is a floodplain. And so you have to think about a new channel being the lowest in the summer, and then it's going to pulse and come up and down. That's what rivers do. So they have designed several parts of their park to be resilient to this. They, you know, they have a ballpark right in the middle of town, and they have a way of addressing each time the floods come through. So again, just looking at, this is the private side. Would, at this point, this would be where your vegetation is starting to get established, and then we would go in and do some park-like manicuring, removing invasives to create a view, but keeping the good vegetation. I can't underestimate the importance of outreach. We, I spent five months before the project began going around and giving presentations with the mayor to, so everybody would sort of be able to grasp what they were going to see. This project, you know, when we do construction, it's ugly, and it's messy. And so there's a lot of preparation that needs to be done. And also, you know, working in people's ideas on how to do the river trail construction. Ways to, ways to manage the vegetation, you can see there's lots of printed, mossed tree, and that's the kind of stuff you can go in and remove. But you need to keep the sycamores, the willows, those roots in the ground. So you can see here, we've, we make sure we have a space between the trail and the river that has vegetation, and good, good established vegetation. So here's old vegetation, you can see, and we set the trail back away from that, which is important. And then here, the ball fields after, so they have fences that actually disengage at the bottom so that they can be lifted up and debris can flow through and not catch. But of course, with, with any floodplain, you're going to have debris, and there's going to be some sort of maintenance that comes along with that. So what was the cost for this project? The river that comes through here, like I said, is much larger than Crooked Creek. We split this project into two phases, and like I said, we had a great private company that donated to the project. So Southwestern Energy put 1.8 million into the project. You'll notice contingency funds that are pretty large there, and that is necessary. We ended up not spending those contingency funds because we had such great vegetation established. That first year or two, you're likely to have floods, and you're likely to need maintenance. Rock House Creek is a place we took some of your leaders on a tour a month ago, a project we just completed, John just completed, a tributary to the Kings River. And same thing, there's a giant slab here that was a major danger. And so we did a restoration of the river, much like this. And this actually is similar in size to Crooked Creek. So you can't see the budget here, unfortunately. But what I can point out is that the total project cost was $878,000. Oh, thank you. If you see, once, when you do a partnership-type project like this, you can see, we have the county, Madison County, right? The county put in $140,000 worth of in-kind earthwork. And earthwork would be one of the largest parts of this project as well. So if you can find, you know, a way to get some of that work done, the county and the city, that is huge. The biggest cost in these projects are harvesting and hauling materials. So trees, rock, fill. And then, you know, the use of Game and Fish and their equipment brought, and then, of course, you can see our private funders on the bottom part of the page, Tyson, Patagonia, and then SARP, Southeast Aquatic Resource Partnership, brought the total project from 870 to 570. So you can see the value of having a partnership, even if it takes the additional time. That's a, just a recent post-project picture, and I show that because this is probably what Crooked Creek would look like in low blow. So I wanted to visit, revisit the cost of putting Lake Harrison in to begin with and the maintenance. And so I worked with Wade to get these numbers. And you may all be really familiar with that, but that's been a lot of question. And so I thought, why don't we look at these costs, and then we look at the long-term maintenance cost and then compare? So the cost was 1.4 to put, 1.46 to put in, of which the city, I think, contributed 366. And then over time, there have been several cleanouts that range in price, but the total to date has been $785,000, and which you've been able to get quite a bit of assistance on. But that comes to about $31,000 of average annual maintenance. And like I said, there haven't been any dam deterioration or repairs to date. But if you're looking at one-time repair, that can be easily $300,000. So let's say one-time repair over the next 20 years, you're looking at long-term maintenance of $900,000. If you add in the 785 you took already, 1.7 is the total cost to maintain the lake from when it was built to 20 years from now. And so you're looking at the total of the whole project at 3, over $3 million.
Joey, on that, you're assuming that the ongoing maintenance will stay at $31,000 a year?
That's the average so far. That is an assumption. And the way I understand it is these cleanouts have been more frequent?
Yes.
And Wade, I don't know if you want to say something?
The cost for cleanups is not necessarily going up, but for having to do them more frequently. So the annual cost is staying the same. Now, realistically, over 20 years, everything's going to go up. So, you know, that's a conservative number, saying $31,000 a year, because it probably will creep up over the course of 20 years.
Wade, have you seen a change in permitting to do those cleanouts?
Permitting is getting much more difficult. I have to, I have two primary permits that I have to get anytime I do one of those. One is an NPDS permit in order to deposit the soil and gravel and debris that's removed. That's a, it's a stormwater permitting requirement, so we've got to make sure that what we're taking out and putting somewhere is going to pollute the stream further down. And then we also have to get, anytime we put our equipment or have any major operation within the stream, we have to get a short-term activity authorization. They've gotten much more difficult. ADQ is getting more and more reluctant to let us, you know, do heavy operations within that stream. I mean, it is a blue-ribbon bastion, you know, when you get downstream repairs. So it is something that EPA and the ADQ want to protect, that water quality.
Are the FEMA grants that we've gotten in the state assistance in the past getting harder to get as well?
We depend on there being a declared disaster in order to have access to those ones, so...
But I know in the last case that we've, we applied for a grant or for FEMA assistance, and we not get it, or?
We did not have any assistance during the search and, the search operation. We've done two other major cleanouts since I've been here, and we did time those following declared disasters, which gave us access to that money. Ideally, we would be able to do it once it starts filling up. What we're actually doing to save money is waiting for a disaster to be declared and then moving on. FEMA may very well say, look, we helped you do this two, three times now, we're not going to help anymore. So it's not that hard yet, but I, after we keep spending FEMA's money and clean it out, they may be a little bit more reluctant.
I also, we did some checking around with some engineering firms in-state, just to get an idea of what this would cost, for if you guys were going to do a 30% design and try to just contract it out. And the bids, or the numbers that we got were three times and a range, but up to four times of what you would be spending in the partnership here to move forward. That's the 30% design and 60% design. So again, just remembering where we are in the process, 30% design and 60% design. Okay, now, my slide's got bumpy, but, um, this, these are my numbers, solely based on other projects that we've worked on. So this is not, I just want to sort of, I want to shoot you straight on the range of the cost of what this could actually cost, so that you are fully informed. And these are kind of the components within construction. So demolition, that's where Fish and Wildlife Service could dramatically help, and just pulling the weir out itself, and that's a huge cost. The earthwork, huge cost of this project. And if we could work with the city or the county or whatever to have help with that, that's another place for cost reduction. But you're looking at, from my experience, now, you can blame me, you can all blame me for these numbers if they come out wrong later. But from my experience, you are looking at a $700,000 to $800,000 project, and please don't leave out the contingency funds. So I prefer 30% of the total project cost to be set aside for contingency funds. Now, we got lucky in the city of Clinton, and we didn't have to use those, so we could use that for whatever we wanted after we knew the project was successful. But that's not the case, and that's not been the case on other projects I've built. So it's important to have that set aside. But here's the real kicker, is the long-term maintenance is zero. It's park maintenance. That's what you're looking at. Once the stream is stable and in place, you're not looking at long-term costs. So total project cost could be anywhere from $900 to a little over $1 million. And here, you are looking at your total cost from inception to 20 years from now at 1.7. Other considerations that's come to light, that they're going to, the Department of Transportation is planning to replace the bridge across the lake, tentatively planning that in their transportation improvement plan in 2022. That might be an opportunity to work with the DOT on aligning that with restoration. Maybe they need to do mitigation in this area for that, and that might provide some funds. We already talked about Fish Passage Program. The average grant there is $70,000, but there is no upper limit. I guess if you could make a really good case for a lot more, then you might get more. I mentioned mitigation funding. We have state grants. They are, you know, $600,000 a year for the whole state, a lot of competition. And then private corporations and foundations can fill in the gap. And that's been, you can see, between Patagonia and Tyson and Southwestern Energy, they've been really key to fill in the gaps for what grants don't pay for. I know I went long, but I hopefully answered maybe all the questions or concerns that you have. I'm happy to take questions or move forward with the rest of your laundry list of items to address in tonight's meetings.
I've got a question, and maybe this more towards the game and fish. What is the possibility of extending the Crooked Creek Water Trail up to Harrison? It currently starts at Paiatt.
The designated water trail?
Yes.
Yes. We have a, we have a trail coordinator that would be able to clue us in on that. I really can't speak to it. I think, I think certainly the discussion could be had. I don't know what her criteria is for, for trails. So I think that's.
I'm a kayaker myself, but I would love to see that happen, and I think it would be good for Harrison.
I, I agree. I bet she would agree. That's just, we just simply would have that conversation with her. That, that's very interesting you bring that up. A very similar project, again, has been on the books for, since 2008 in Bentonville, a very controversial Lake Bella Vista dam project. But one of the, one of the goals there, if we, if they remove that dam, we will, that was one of our goals, was to establish a water trail through that area. Very similar to what you're suggesting. Kirsten Bartlow is our water show, water trail coordinator, and we would bring her in for that conversation.
I would love to see that happen.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea.
Any other comments?
I've got a question. Where would the new sediment, the new gravel bars, where would they be deposited when we have our annual two to three to four-year floods?
Floods, that's a very good question. So deposits typically happen on the inside bend. So if you've got a river, and this would be the outside bend, it usually deposits on the inside bend. So anywhere you see those curves laid out on our conceptual design, the inside bends are where you typically have gravel bars and gravel deposition. Now, if you've got a large amount of gravel coming in from upstream, that's where your forested corridor can help trap and hold that sediment, and the channel itself moves it on down. So the job of a river is to move sediment.
Right.
And so you want, in those high sediment, in those high floods, for it to be conveyed down the channel, and then whatever, when the fall goes back down, it gets deposited in the right places. And there's trees there to hold it.
Because I know downstream, and the farmland that's, that's downstream from town, you have new gravel bars every time there's a flood, or not, not even what we would call a major flood, but you know, when the creek rises so many feet during a heavy rain or something.
So do you mean they shift, or do you mean you have an increase in gravel?
Yeah, yeah, gravel bars will move along the creek downstream than they have for years. And I just wonder how we would control that right here in a park like said.
That's a very good question. So the structures that we put in place would hold the channel in place, as long as our vegetation gets established. If you start to have eroding stream banks, then yeah, the, the channel can shift and those gravel bars can move. But if it's in place and it's stable, it's going to deposit on the inside bends, and hopefully you are conveying most of it down the channel and only having a little bit of deposition on the property. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay. In the interest of time, I will defer to the mayor for some comments, and then we would move on.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of share where I'm at on it, kind of where I've come, because when I started out on this project, I was against removing the weir. I like, most people in Harrison remember the eighties and the nineties, and it was, it was bad. It was real bad. You can imagine that we all, several of us experienced that. It was a place you just wouldn't go. So when we got the lake, we were excited, and I think a lot of us are today, and they're feeling that it's a little risk. But over the last eight months, I've had an opportunity to understand and learn with you folks, kind of, the process, what's going to happen. And it led me to believe, you know, because we're taking the creek, and instead of this, it's going to be this, well, it makes a lot of sense that a lot more water's going to flow through there. So if you go down to the creek right now, and I know, you know, a lot of us drive by, and the beauty of it is, is there even in the summer months. You know, we being real estate agents, we drive people by there, hey, isn't that great? But you walk them down there and walk through the goose droppings, and it's not too delightful. There's a few people here that I know walk that trail, and they've experienced that. And I had, I had forced myself during the summer, early, or late spring and early summer, to go down there every day and walk through that goose droppings to make sure. It got me angry to figure out a way to get rid of them. And we kind of got rid of them. You know, we got rid of them this year, now can we do that again next year? So that's a big issue with me, because we're going to have a four hundred thousand dollar beautiful park put together down there, and that's where all the goose droppings are. So, you know, we talk about the, the goose droppings lightly, and it is a huge problem. So if it means we need a creek to get rid of them, I'm for it. I'm moving to the middle. But what really brought me over is when you can add flowing, clear, clean water that's so, and I'm not a creek guy, I'm a golfer. And, and if you walk right now, you walk down the back upstream of Crooked Creek, is it that wonderful? I mean, it's flowing back there. And if we can take that flow, even in half the size, and bring that through town, is that going to be wonderful? Is that going to help tourism? I mean, this can be, you know, this is not a political positive position for me to take. You know, I guess politics want to be a little more neutral, but I, after I went through, because I was on the other side of this, I told my good friend Mike, you know, I'm really against it in the beginning, but I learned, and I hope the people of Harrison will learn, and I'm sure the people on this council will. So that's, that's really all I have to say. I, I thank you all for everything you've done so far. You've put an enormous amount of time, but I do know the county, the city and the county, they're suspicious. You know, they don't trust, because things don't always come out, and as we go backwards, it's bad, so.
Our concern, I'm a justice of the peace, as is Justice Wood, and Justice Wood's back here. Our concern is for our constituents in the county downstream, what could we anticipate a different effect having the creek there instead of the, what we have now? Is it going to change what happens downstream with our low-water bridges and what we have to deal with downstream out of the county?
The change from a lake to a creek won't, but if you continue to have erosion upstream, systems are dynamic. These systems are dynamic. So if you have something happen up in the watershed, it's going to come on down both ways, whether it's a lake or a river. So I can't say that nothing's ever going to happen to the downstream landowners, but it's not going to be a direct result from this project. It's going to be cumulative from what's going on upstream. Does that make sense? Yes.
Okay, Wade, could you?
You know, we beat this thing around, and what it really comes down to is it's just thirty percent design situation is where we are, correct?
Correct.
Trying to throw the common sense factor in this thing and cost, we've already spent three-quarters of a million dollars in, since the creation of the weir to clean it out. Three times. Twice for sure FEMA money. Third time, and I agree with Wade, it's kind of like the little boy keeps sticking his finger in the plug to stop it. Sooner or later FEMA's going to say, sorry, it's the same project over and over and over again, and you're not improving the situation, we're not going to give you any more money. And I would have to agree. The cost to dredge it, to me, is almost a single factor to move on and get this thirty percent design, and let's see what we got. It's going to cost us, as a city, I understand, ten thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That's what Wade is, is reporting tonight.
Am I correct, Ms. Wade?
You're correct, yes, sir.
It's going to cost us ten thousand dollars. So we're in committee. There was no recommendation made in the presentation that we received in our packets, whether we push it forward or not, but.
Well, there is a recommendation on the information sheet, an action requested.
Actually, fifteen thousand, but it was dropped to ten?
Dropped to ten, yes, sir.
I, fellas, I walk that creek in summertime, really from the first of March until the end of October every day. It's terrible with the goose droppings, but it's equally as bad in the late summer with the stagnant water at the dam. It's, it's, I would almost go far enough to say it is as embarrassing with the stagnant water as it was before the weir was put in. And I know the weir was put in for all the right reasons. Those people were here, they were key in making that weir, Ken Bailey, Robin Corcoran Dale, all those, Jeff Christensen, they all said the same thing, that they wanted it gone. I'm still concerned about the overall cost of the project, but I really have no problem making a recommendation that we push forward to full council for the ten thousand dollars on our part, to at least get this thirty percent design and see what the real cost of this project would be.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion?
So may.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Is there any comment from the audience at all? Anyone else that would like to speak to this?
Hey, Pat Moles, our former mayor, Pat Moles. And so this is what it's like on this side of the podium. Enjoy.
I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words, and I will keep it short. In politics, they tell you that when you have to give a little talk, you stand up, you speak up, and then you shut up. I guess I have a problem with doing away with Lake Harrison. The, thirty years ago or so, whenever it was, that we voted to put that in, it was because of what the creek looked like. And Jerry, you know what it looked like, and most of you do. And.
It was not pretty.
The, the lake has become a central point of the city of Harrison. It's very aesthetically beautiful. And the walking trail around the lake was a genius thing that, that we put in. It's very pleasant to walk around that lake and walk up the creek. I know Game and Fish has, has their agenda, and they do a great job. But I think it is imperative that this council start consulting your constituents and the people of Harrison.
I agree with that.
Even if you have to have public hearings or a public of some kind to get some input from the citizens of Harrison, you might find, you just might find that the citizens of Harrison don't have a problem with some of their tax dollars going to maintaining and restoring Lake Harrison. Let's talk to the people. The lake was made for people, and I would like this council to keep that in front of their minds the whole time, that this lake is a people lake. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moles. And, and to that point, I think it's important that we get all the information.
Yeah, Ken Savills.
Again, very quickly, with two different points of view, or from two points to address, I guess. Wade brought up the fact that FEMA may cut off that money. I'm honored to be very involved with our church mission work, and we've worked up and down a lot, the Arkansas River Valley this year, from the flood, from Fort Smith to Pine Bluff, worked on a number of homes, and let me assure you, FEMA has cut off the money. A number of these homes that we've gone in, torn out from flood damage, rebuilt, put the homes back in place, applied for FEMA money for a second and third time, in this case, the second time on one lady's house, because the Arkansas River floods, and FEMA denied it. So they are cutting back, your money's going to stop, Wade's right to tell you that. Second thing has to do with the goose droppings. Our Boone County Imagination Library has a reading in the park every Thursday night. Jerry's been a speaker there, and thank goodness somebody cleaned off the, the walkways for us. We'll run down there, we'll have somewhere between seventeen and thirty children on any Thursday night where we're reading to them, doing a little song, having a good time promoting the Imagination Library. And we've had to move the kids up onto the podiums because of the goose droppings that are around. It's just terrible down there. In fact, I was embarrassed, I didn't know how bad they were till we started this program. So I urge our work on that, but your FEMA money, it's already being cut off, and these are to homeowners.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the public? Is there any discussion from council?
Mr. Neighbors.
Oh, Mr. Neighbors.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for coming and explaining to us what's involved here. I'd like to just respond to Mayor Moles' issue about public input. This is, this has been discussed at the council several times, and, and the public has been informed, and so there has been a lot of opportunity for public input. I believe that the other issues that Mayor Moles addressed, you have already addressed, I think it's important for us to know that the stuff that's there now, the park, the new park, the walking trails, all that stuff stays. It all gets incorporated into, into the, the longer-term plan. And then, and I would also remind us that there were, there were some surveys made early on, and the results of social media surveys were people, people that responded, and there were several hundred people responding. It was three to one in favor of removing the dam and taking the creek back to its natural state, so I just remind people of that. I feel like there has been a lot of, you have given people the opportunity to put input, and I think there has been quite a bit of public input. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say also, before anything would ever be done beyond the ten thousand dollars, we would probably have numerous town hall meetings. We would get a lot more input and listen to the people a lot more.
I think the ten thousand is for the lack of a term. It's the seed money we need to see what this thing is going to cost.
Jim Grisham.
I thank everyone in the room, and my first point is, I hope that these six young men don't receive a demerit or something for that. The second thing is, probably two other people in this room might recognize a critical part of this project. The city has placed something into existence that is a death trap, that we now know has issues associated with it. We know how to fix it, we need to start with spending ten thousand dollars and getting on it. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, any other comments? State the motion that is a, the motion is made to appropriate ten thousand dollars for this thirty percent design cost. I would ask for a vote now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same. We'll move this project on to, or this item on to council. Thank you very much. Wade, you get to stay up there for the next items. We have five budget items, and I'm going to let Wade go through those in the interest of time to, rather than me making comments, so.
I will attempt to go through these quickly. The first item is simply my mistake that I made when we were prepping the 2020 budget. In our Conservation Resources Department, I actually cut an employee's salary without it being warranted. So just the information was in the packets, but it would be a total increase of two thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for the, for the Department Conservation Resources Department in order to correct that, so that at the end of the year, I'm not over budget, because I don't plan on cutting the employees' pay as we go through the year. So that would be the first item. Second item is to decrease the new equipment line item in the wastewater treatment department budget. We had, we were able to address some of our needs last year after we had started prepping the budget. So in order to account for the fact that we did spend the money within our budget last year, I do not want it in the budget this year, simply so I don't have to say no repeatedly for other equipment requests. So that would be a total reduction of thirty-two thousand dollars in the new equipment item for wastewater treatment from eighty-three thousand down to fifty-one thousand. The third item is to increase the building maintenance line items in buildings and grounds and the maintenance shop budgets. This is work that was budgeted for last year that we had scheduled towards the end of the year. Unfortunately, our contractor ran into delays and was not able to complete the work until January. And so since the work was completed in January, we have to pay for it out of this And so since the work was completed in January, we have to pay for it out of this year's budget. The buildings and grounds, no, the maintenance shop would increase by $3,287.50, and the buildings and grounds budget would increase by $8,222.50. The next two items are to activate a couple of projects that we have money allocated for in our infrastructure funds. Let me look through here. The first one would be to continue work, building out our SCADA system and our water and sewer systems. We've already completed the work in the water department, and then we sort of took a break and started researching what the best fit would be for our wastewater plant and our lift stations on the sewer side. We'd originally allocated $150,000 for the SCADA upgrades project. We currently have a remaining balance of around $60,242. We are requesting to include in the 2020 budget $45,000 in order to complete the project and get our wastewater treatment plant and our pump stations out in the system, where we have full SCADA access and can monitor things a lot better than having to go out there and just look at it. And so that would be, that would be in addition to $45,000 through our infrastructure project for 2020. And the final request is to start work on an infrastructure project that we have in our new infrastructure plan. It's the extension of Daly Drive south to Highway 65, and then continuing on to Forward Drive Gibson area. I've had some meetings recently that there could be some potential development and changes on, for some of our businesses out in that area, to where we need to get a better idea of what we're going to do, so that we can coordinate with them. So I've, we selected Burns &amp; McDonald, their office out of Fayetteville, Arkansas. They're a national firm, but they do have an office in Arkansas that we would be working with to do a conceptual design and traffic study and planning, so that we can go to these businesses and this potential development, and tell them what we're going to be doing in the future. That would be, I'm requesting $50,000 to be added to the 2020 budget in order to get that work completed, and that would be, that would be all of the requests. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wade, I think I need to make full disclosure with Burns &amp; McDonald. Some of them all works there, but so does 5,000 and other people.
Yes.
And I think you worked with them long before I took office.
Yes.
There's nothing, no connection.
Correct. They were, when we did the selection process for Goblin Drive, they actually came in second place. So we went through, we went through our annual SOQ, Statement of Qualifications, so we received those in. They're very qualified, and I did not want to give this work to the second firm that's working on Goblin Drive, so this way, we've got two different firms that'll be working for us on these projects and can hopefully focus their attention on it.
Okay, what you have before you, basically five housekeeping functions, and while I didn't have an opportunity to speak with Wade at length in regard to these, I did with Luke. Luke, you didn't see any issues with any of them?
No, nothing. There are things, the first two are especially housekeeping. The third one, that's a little part of the reason why we're in the black this year. I mean, that's just another reason we didn't get to that project, to spend all that money. So that does help us stay in the black for 2019, so 2020 will have additional expenditures there. And then again, just the additions of the infrastructure projects. The SCADA system, as he's mentioning, is actually under budget in total. From the entire infrastructure project that was in the book, and then we just need to get started, so we can coordinate.
Since this is not regular council, we can vote on this as one item, and just simply vote to move all of them in. Once we get to council, I think we'll have to vote on them individually. So entertain a motion for approval of all five.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cha-ching, let's move on. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
And who is handling the next? Is that you?
Yes. And tonight, I will end.
You're the hygiene lady tonight.
Yes. This is basically to update and better define our personnel. And Christine has been working on this, and in the future, there will be some additional. But this first one is on the uniform and our personnel appearance and our personal hygiene, and so it's more of a, let's all present the city of Harrison well. And the second one is on the use of narcotics and alcohol and tobacco. There will be no more stepping right outside the door and smoking. You have to maintain so many feet away, and it is my opinion that this should go to council.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve movement to council.
You got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Good deal. We'll move those on first. And let's see, we'll skip Mary Jean.
Yeah, let's just skip her.
Skip her.
I'll bet Jeremy might have something to add.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you all see Jeremy's picture in the paper?
Yeah, we did. He, hey, yes. Good job. He saved a life.
Yes, he did.
By using the Narcan.
Yes.
Good deal. I'll bet somebody appreciates that. So we'll get down to Chris Ed.
All right. Tonight, first up on the agenda, we have some gentlemen here, Shane Wallace, Kenny Pillow, and Jacob Griggs, to discuss a mitigation plan through me, sir. Emergency.
We don't have nothing fancy to put up on this.
All right.
What kind of what this is, is something that we can put in. It's more of an emergency sheet. We'll put in all the local businesses. It's kind of one of those deals, we hope you don't need us, but we're kind of here if you do, type of thing. I'm going to serve, for those of you that don't know, we're a restoration company. We serve for any type of disaster, fire, water, mold, natural disaster, anything like that. I'm in this sheet, as you guys can read over. It kind of tells you the kind of steps you can follow, in case there was anything to happen. And whether it's your home or your business, we kind of can do anything from there. Kind of the whole point of bringing it up is to make sure it was okay with you guys before we put anything in the businesses like that, and anything you guys might want to add or take off, anything like that.
Jeremy, have you seen it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've visited, so.
I've seen this work down at the house next door when they had a fire. They did a great job.
Thank you.
Is there any reason you left the police department on?
Not particularly.
I'm just curious.
No, we can definitely add that to it.
I think it's a great idea. Is it my understanding that maybe there were going to be some risk assessment plans developed, or something like that? Contingency plans or something like that? Wade, we were talking earlier today, you said something about that maybe.
Yeah, I'll give you guys a little, little bit of background as to why Midaserve started to take a look at, you know, providing this out in our community. The mayor and I were approached by another company that does mitigation-type services. They were not a local company. They are going, they like to go around to businesses, provide similar items to this, and then they can even go further if the businesses want to talk to them about, like what you're talking about, mitigation, locate, you know, giving people information about where their shut-off valves are, so they've got all that in one place. Mayor and I, it's a reputable company. Mayor and I kind of like the idea of what they're talking about doing, but we got a local company that does the same thing. So we thanked them, and said, you know, we may continue to communicate with them about it, but we called Midaserve to ask if this is something that they would be willing to do with businesses that are interested, as well as with us on our facilities. And Shane Wallace was, he liked the idea, and so this is kind of a step towards doing that, and kind of helping some of our businesses, as well as us at our facilities, identify what we need to do in case of fire, flooding, things like that.
Could this also, Jeremy, could this also improve our ISO rating?
Probably not so much on this end. This is a good service they're offering for businesses and places as far as mitigating and kind of planning of what happens. But no, probably as far as ISO rating, you probably don't have any respect on that.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Bill, we are on here. We're the water department after hours. We're always there. That is the number for the police department.
And I knew that, but I kept looking for emergency, fire.
Yeah. When you cannot get a hold of any other utilities, they will call the police department. We're always there.
Yep. Two checks, that's it. But I think they need to be on there.
That is our main number.
Okay, so tonight, Wade, what were we looking for on?
I think it was more informational to see if there was any feedback from the council. If this is something you'd like us to move forward with, working with Midaserve, just say the word, and we'll do it.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. Do you need that in the form of a motion or anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, I do know that you did a fantastic job.
Okay, good job. Sorry you had to wait so long to go through this.
All right, next we have policy. This is more of a clarification about our policy of taking home vehicles.
Yes, Mayor Jackson and I had discussed quite some time ago. I guess he questioned why some of our employees who are on call 24/7, or when they're going through on-call rotation, why they don't take city vehicles home, so that they have quick access. You know, that has been policy in the past, where supervisors that are typically on-call all the time, as well as certain employees, you know, they, they take vehicles home, so they have access to them 24/7. In the past, there has been abuse of that, and so it was shut down several years ago. And that was, you know, I kind of explained that to the mayor, and, but he wanted me to take a look at what we can do to put a good policy in place to help keep that abuse from happening, because these are publicly owned vehicles, and we don't want to betray the public trust on how we use them. So I got with Chief Grady, he was kind enough to share their take-home-vehicle policy with me, and I built a policy specific to public works that has a lot of similarities to his. A draft was in the packets. I wanted to sort of hand it out, explain it, and then not necessarily move it forward to council this month, but put it back on for committee next month. We can have a little bit more discussion, and then possibly move it forward to the March full council meeting. One of my biggest concerns, as we were going into it, is, you know, these policies typically do allow for passengers that aren't necessarily employees of the city. Example would be if somebody has a take-home vehicle, and they've got a kid that goes to school or daycare, you know, drop them off, pick them up in the evening on the way to and from work. I did check with our finance department, who works with the insurance. Those employees would be covered, would not be taken on, you know, a risk of them not being covered. I certainly did not want one of my employees to have a kid in the car, or something happened, and then find out that our insurance was just going to tell them to take a walk. We did, we did address that, and so that's taken care of. And with that, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask that you take a look at the policy over the next month, so that we can discuss it a little bit further once we get to committee and to March.
The passenger in the vehicle, that's a non-employee.
Correct.
Will be covered.
Yes.
The liability is going to belong to.
Yes. And the way it was explained to me, as long as our policy allows it, and they're not violating our policy, they are covered under our insurance.
Has this been communicated, this possible change been communicated to the employees of the city?
I have discussed it with my supervisors, because the way I'm going to set this up is each department is going to have some freedom to assign vehicles as they see fit. Ultimately, I'll be the one to approve or disapprove an employee being assigned a take-home vehicle, but, because each department's a little bit different in the way they handle their own call, and who might need those vehicles after hours. And also, at the end of the day, there is a little bit of a benefit to the employees as a result of this, by not driving their own vehicles every day to and from work. It's a competitive environment to get people to work for us and get quality employees.
I think it's a great incentive.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we give, it'll cost us a little, but it'll mean a lot to them. A lot, many cases, they can get away with that and one other vehicle, whereas now they may need two.
And it does clearly define what's acceptable as far as personal use, and I'll just say it publicly, they cannot take it to the liquor store, unless they're digging on a water leak in the parking lot of the liquor store, and they're not going to be out front. So, you know, it defines some things, so that we're not betraying public trust on how we use those vehicles.
All right. And then the next thing we have is a bid waiver request apparently on the roof.
Yes, this is for a budgeted item for 2020. We are having some real issues with our roof at the water and sewer construction office up on top of the hill at the old water treatment plant. It leaks terribly. It's a, a lot of it is an old.
Only one of Brian's.
Yeah. A lot of it is an old concrete flat roof. It needs a new roof right now, and we would prefer to do a little bit of extra work to get rid of the flat portion of that roof. The reason I'm asking for a bid waiver is because this work will be in excess of $20,000 by our purchasing policy, as well as state law. Anything over $20,000 has to go through a competitive sealed bid process. But city council has the authority to waive that bid process, given the reason. I took a little bit different approach to this than I would normally on a job this size, is we just, we approached local contractors. We did not give them set design specs for them to give us hard bids on. We said, use your experience in dealing with these types of structures, in order to give us the best idea and the best proposal that we could get. And we did receive, we had requested from more than two, but we had two submit. One was, let's flip too far.
Bowser.
Yeah, Bowser Metal submitted a proposal, and it was some lengthy information in the packets, just to show you, give you an idea of what their proposed method of construction was, as well as what the costs were. But Bowser Metal was at $82,333.27. Davis Construction proposal was for $120,000. Now, they did submit that as a guaranteed max price, so it, you know, there's the possibility it could have been less than that. Simply put, we only had $110,000 budgeted for this work. Both proposals were acceptable as far as their proposed methods, the materials, and obviously, they're both reputable contractors that we work with on a regular basis. We trust them to get the work done. My request is to award the proposal, the project, to Bowser Metal Supply in the amount of $82,337.27, simply because it is within the budget that we've allotted.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Bill, you want to do some marijuana?
Sure. And I need, what I want to do here is, Jeff and I discussed this earlier this week. The ordinance is already up for council consideration on its second and third reading when we come back and meet in February. Chris and I had discussed this a month ago, possibly. I'm thinking that you all need this thing in place, so you can put this to work as quickly as possible. I see the reason for an emergency clause on that, and that's the reason I'm asking.
Okay, and let me explain that just a little bit. And I apologize, I wasn't here last, last month. Grant actually done quite a bit of research. It's not an emergency as much as it once was, because we have found through Arkansas statute, Title 12, we feel, Grant feels, Judge feels, that we can make the arrest for the marijuana or paraphernalia, when it is in the misdemeanor variety of personal type use, or just a pipe or a small amount. We can actually make the arrest, and we can decide and release, without having to make physical arrests. So what we are wanting to go forward with is the medical marijuana ordinance, which I've compiled several other cities and states, and drafted one that meets our needs, and that's the one that y'all have, before you, that y'all have voted on. It's fine if you would want to go ahead and put it in place and read it second and third time, if you thought there needed to be some more discussion, or if y'all had some more questions from maybe your constituents, that it needed to go further, that's certainly understandable. Right now, we've not had a pro- Right now, we've not had a problem with it. But in the future, it's when we will have the problem. Because when the medical marijuana cards become more readily available, when the prescriptions are doled out, if we don't have something in place, they can administer their medicine sitting on Courthouse Square. So, and that's what this is for.
I got it. And like I said, it's going to come up for a vote when we meet, actually three weeks, not two weeks. And at that point in time, we can discuss as a group if we want to go ahead and do second, third. I've received nothing but compliments from the people out there that said, like what we say, let's move on with it. And my thinking is, and you know how I feel, I've always believed people have the right for the three readings. It's, that's more for the people to make their issues, if they have questions, because it gives them a 90-day period.
Right.
We have a situation here. I understand that it's not as, I don't want to say important, that's not the word.
Urgent?
Urgent, as it would be if it was methamphetamine, cocaine, or heroin.
Right.
However, it's still a drug.
Correct.
And as far as I'm concerned, when we come back and we visit three weeks, there's no action required. But I, Chris, for you guys, I just didn't put it in place, let's put this thing forward.
And that would be, that's great with us.
Okay.
To add to your comments, every single person that contacted me about it, 100% were for it.
I never had a call, never had a comment, email against it.
So we'll be prepared at the council meeting to go on the second.
Yes. And, you know, we need to be aware, you know, I picked up the paper Monday, and the marijuana dispensary mountain home opening this week.
Opening this week.
Yeah, so, I mean, Chris, it's here.
It is, and it's open in several places.
But we have no action there. However, Chris, come tell us about the grant proposal.
Oh, okay. I spoke with, who I've known, Jeremy Ragland for several years. And he works for Northwest Arkansas Economic Development. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. He had, we had had a discussion about grants and how some cities qualify for different amounts, different percentages of grants. And he said, have you ever thought about filing a federal grant for equipment? And I said, well, no. I said, you know, this is all kind of new to me, but I'm all for it if you think we can get it done. And he said, he said, he told me where he had helped certain cities that qualified at 65 or 70%, where they bought two cars and they only paid 30%. I said, what's ours? He said, 15%. And I said, well, that's, you know, better than us. So we typically, well, our needs this year was actually five vehicles. And we probably could have got by with four, but being that we're starting our building project, I want to get, I want to get all of our equipment we can, where hopefully we don't have to buy new equipment for a few years. Because in addition to what Luke has figured out what our payment will be on the money that we have to borrow in addition to our principal, I think, I don't know, but I think, and I'm almost certain, if we don't make some big expenses in those years, I could pay maybe 100, 150,000 more a year on top of the payment. That way, we get out under, instead of 10 years, maybe we can get out of it in five or six. So, and that being said, we've got new weapons, we have, our vehicles are in good shape, our fleet, and I'm sure Wayne could tell you, it's probably in the best shape it's ever been in. When I worked here as a patrolman, the car I was in ran 24/7. I got out of it, the next guy got into it, the next shift, that car never stopped. And they were worn out within a year and a half or two years. We have cars now that last the officer four, five, six years. So, and we get more mileage out of them.
Now, has the grant been approved?
The grant needs a resolution to go forward. Jeremy and Chief Cagle has been working with Jeremy on this and getting all the paperwork and documentation that they need to get this approved. And they, Jeremy had shared with us that we need the council to approve this resolution to go forward with the process of obtaining the grant.
For $21,000.
And that's, to my understanding, we can get $21,000 back. And I mean, you know, if we don't get approved, we don't get approved, but if we don't try, we don't know.
You don't apply, you don't, you don't, you're a champ.
Right, right.
Any questions with committee?
Luke is, this is within our budget, the expenditure for 2020.
We're already budgeted for it. You know, we've talked several times, it's kind of like buying four cars and getting the bid for free.
That's why, that's how I read it, but I just want to make sure and get clarification. I make a motion to approve the resolution for the grant, or move it on to council, I mean.
All those in place?
Aye.
Against? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Business license amendment, that's you.
Come on, go over that. Can I? That resolution that you just took, decided to take on the full council, will probably come back up again in other areas, because we can apply for that grant in multiple different areas. So fire could potentially apply for that as well, as well as Public Works. And we're already eyeing something that, that would be a big-ticket item. I believe that grant is up to 50,000. So, and you can get that multiple times, just based on whatever department it is.
Nothing better than free money. Nothing better.
Especially when you're already going to spend it.
Got it.
All right. I'll kind of let Jeremy speak a little bit to the amendments on the business license, and I'll kind of touch on 501(c)(3) portion of it.
So basically, under the section 4.01.03, we've wanted to add a definition for what an employee exactly is to the ordinance. Number four on this section, employee for purpose of this ordinance includes the owner of the business, not just individual employees. And then under the exempt businesses, we want to reword it. Section number three, residential and commercial landlords. A residential and/or commercial landlord is an owner of real property who, in exchange for consideration, leases or rents said real property to a third party, commonly known as the tenant. That way, we're not really charging these landlords a business license for commercial properties such as church park apartments, et cetera. You want to touch on that? I don't really know much about the nonprofit section.
I believe, too, on the employee, we had discussed using the 0 to 49 number. I don't know if that's part of the adjustment, but.
No, 1 to 49.
I think we left at 1 to 49. The clause, we didn't.
Okay. Just wanted to get kind of some clarification on that part. The other part, the 501(c)(3), it really came up due to a very large employer that we have here in town. It, whenever they're going to do their business license, since they have the 501(c)(3) designation, not only did that allow them not to pay any sort of business license, they also have multiple other subsequent people that are a part of that 501(c)(3) that also would not be charged a business license. So, you know, they have to perform the work on a lot of these brick-and-mortar stores. And with so many of them being classified as the 501(c)(3) designation underneath the umbrella of their parent company, they were doing a lot of the fire inspections, which is kind of why we're doing this for free. And so I didn't know that that was what the intent was for the ordinance that was passed. So we wanted to kind of bring that back up to your attention and let you know, you know, it is a little bit of a different situation than what you were probably thinking about whenever we first passed the ordinance, and to kind of get your thoughts on that. I don't know if you want me to say who it is or not, but I'll let Jerry speak if you want that.
Yeah, I'll let you address that, and please do. But I had a question, because Luke and I even this afternoon were throwing this thing around, and we had, you know, you can look at this 100 different ways, and you can justify whichever one you pick. I have a question of why we are exempting them in the first place. If we told you, we wanted you to have a business license, we have to go check out your facility, and it's going to cost you $50 a year. Would you have a problem with that? I don't think anybody would. I mean, you know, I really don't. I think the people that are going to have a problem with a business license are going to have a problem with a business license, and not necessarily the 501(c)(3) people. So that's my position. Now, I think the policy right now is taking a different position. We're exempting 501(c)(3).
Yeah, and we've already put it out there. The company in question is the hospital. I believe they have the 501(c)(3) designation. And not only is the hospital exempt, they have purchased or got underneath their umbrella probably 30 different doctors here in town as well. So.
All those clinics, yeah.
All those clinics then being taxed exempt as well, and I don't know that that was the intent of the ordinance. And so we just kind of wanted to get some clarification on that, but then we had our discussion, you know. If it's brick-and-mortar, we have to go do inspections anyways. Is that what we really wanted to do? Not that you can change it for this year anyways, they've already put it out there. Any kind of adjustments to this, we would recommend doing it for January 1st of next year.
We'd love for you guys to have a good discussion about it.
Well, to be honest, I think if you're generating an economic enterprise within the city of Harrison, and if you're based here, that you should pay it, or if, not even just based here, if you're doing business. So it gives the city, a lot of people don't like that word, the oversight of what's going on. And you make the assumption that it's somebody that you can get a hold of, you know, if there's an issue. I mean, the purpose of this, the $50, some people would even, that have the business license, would see it as a nuisance tax, correct? You just said it's not an issue. It's the information that backs that up. And do you allow, even though it's a 501(c)(3) organization, to be exempt from saying, this is where we're located, this is our address, and this is what we do?
No, we would perform the services on those facilities also.
Right.
We just wouldn't charge them.
Right. And that's why I say, I think that it's, I don't know whether you have an exemption for that, or whether you decrease the cost to half, or leave it up to them, a $5 donation, you know, amount, or whatever you do, but I think it's a necessity that every economic entity that's generating some sort of activity be recognized.
By saying that, also, you know, we have limited it to brick-and-mortar stores as well. You say economic entity that's generating business, that can be a wide.
That's what I say. It's not, that's an easy statement to say, and I don't know how you, you know, does Amazon need to get, give us a business license for the city of Harrison? Because there's a lot of people using Amazon within Harrison.
They're playing sales side now.
Yeah. But are you going to require them?
I know what you're saying. I guess, you know, we went into, it went into exempt businesses, and it very specifically says hospitals.
Right.
I guess our issue is not so much the hospital per se, but it's the freestanding clinics that are now home of hospitals. Is that, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and or the 501(c) designation.
No, it doesn't say that.
I know that, but again, hospitals are 501(c).
Yeah, so me, I don't know how, I had a whole lot of dog in the hunt here, but I just kind of want to make sure that they, for their business license, they're going out and doing their work in the hospital, I would assume.
Those, they have, like Luke said, they have a lot of different locations throughout the city. They're rather large structures that have a lot of potential for, you know, what does loss of life or injury or anything like that. And basically, just for administrative fees, you know, this is something we could look at.
Any feelings from the committee? Obviously, this is in place, so we couldn't change it until, we can come back and beat it around.
I think that we, we get someone to take a look at how other communities have done this, or what is not accepted, but find out what other communities have, not just 501(c) but medical facilities or whatever.
Let me ask this question. I mean, it just popped in my head, we said the hospital, Washington Regional now has two facilities freestanding in town, or three? Or three, correct. There are three facilities.
At least three.
They're in the same status. I believe Washington Regional's a 501(c)(3) in Washington County. What have they done? I'm asking, guys, I don't know. I mean, we've got competitive hospitals working.
Yeah, they, if they had the 501(c)(3) designation, they, they wouldn't pay a business license. Now, we'd still go out and get their information.
Right, according to ordinance, the way it's wrote up now, we'd still require them to submit an application with all their information, et cetera, but they would not be charged the fees.
So we need to look at possibly pulling hospitals and freestanding facilities under that umbrella off exempt status. Make sure what comes out.
Pulling them off and then saying if it's a 501(c), you know, hospitals and medical facilities are not exempt, but the fee is reduced to a minimal amount for administrative reasons, if they're a 501(c).
That's, yes, I mean, that would be my thinking, but, yeah, I think.
So you leave the 501(c)(3) designation for churches and the like, but take it off for?
I don't know.
That's, I mean, it's.
You're allowed one exemption for your business. I don't know. You can argue it a lot of ways, and you can justify it.
That's interesting.
That's why you guys get the big bucks, and by the way, you got, you got a raise, thanks to Mary Jean.
Principle. It was on principle.
Their 501(c)(3) status had nothing to do with the lawsuit they were involved in in regards to.
Yeah, the other, I don't know.
Property tax, wasn't that what it was?
Right, right.
But it was actually exempt status, that's what tripped the trigger.
Yeah.
Was that finally settled?
It was, but I've heard it's back out there.
Okay. Grant, you're the ex-mayor, you're the legal eagle.
I would only say that if we're going to, I don't think we should single out probably from a legal standpoint, and if we're going to single out some 501(c)(3)'s as being exempt and others not, I think that could be, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend dividing it along those lines.
It's either, it's either one or all.
I think so. Come up with a standard that's uniformly applied and not.
And do a minimum fee for 501(c)(3)'s. That's a possibility.
And if it's not going to go into effect until next year, I'm not sure there's urgency to decide anything.
Just suggestion, checking with some other places. Somebody's figured it out before.
Sure.
Anything else, Jeremy?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
We need to approve a resolution to have a public hearing. If I'm remembering correctly, a public hearing for the right-of-way of the Mike Wood property is going to be in the February.
Council meeting? Yes.
You approved the resolution.
Yeah, it's just carried through on the agenda since it's been on there. I just wanted to.
I think that's already been.
Okay. Have you had any discussion or questions about, because you'll vote on it at the next meeting.
So we'll have the public hearing right at the start of the next council meeting. We will have a draft ordinance for the abandonment. I believe it's a one-read ordinance, is that correct, Grant?
Yeah.
So we'll take public comment, probably won't get any, but it's a process that we have to go through. We kept it on the agenda since it's been on there for the last few months, and just a quick reminder.
Carol Boone?
Yes. I'd like to. I briefly touched on it last month. Carol Boone is looking at making some capital improvements on the delivery system for potable water to their clients. It will require some restructuring of their debt, and doing so requires approval by three of the four member cities by resolution. I did get a draft copy of the resolution. I said it at each one of your seats ahead of the meeting. It's very basic language. With us tonight is Barry Connell, he's the general manager of the Carol Boone Water District, and Chris Hall with Olson Engineers, who does a lot of their engineering and planning work, and they will be heavily involved with the capital improvements. And Chris, did you have a few words that you wanted to say as far as?
Sure. I guess I missed the first part. I was just doing a long introduction. Good evening. My name is Chris Hall, and I'm an engineer with Olson in Fayetteville, and we have been the district's engineer since their inception back in the 70s. Name doesn't sound familiar. We used to be called Goodwins and Yates, till a couple of years ago, we merged with Olson. So anyway, first off, I've learned through talking to the city managers and water, public -- public -- So anyway, first off, I've learned through talking to the city managers and water, public works director, that the first thing I need to say is rates are not going to go up. So that, I made that mistake a couple of times, I got about three quarters of my speech, and then they all like, it was a big sigh of relief, and I realized, well, maybe I should open with that, and things would get better. But basically, four member cities, Bridge Springs, Berryville, Green Forest, and Harrison signed an MOU and started the district. And that MOU requires us to come anytime that the district wants to increase their indebtedness to do CIP or capital improvement projects. They have to come in front of each one of the cities and get three of the four cities resolution passed. So that is where we're starting tonight. In the, a couple of years ago, we finished the district's water master plan that we do every, by every five years, and we identified three projects that need to be completed. One of the projects was an intake pump, a drawer intake pump, replacing an existing 300 horse, put a new 500 horse in. The other project was a generation project. Right now, the, if y'all don't know, they do load shedding in the summer, and what that does is it shaves off the peak electrical that they take from the grid, and they go onto generators. Well, right now, they have generators that do not operate all their operations during that time, and they actually lose, they lose, lack a better word, water level and stuff in some of the tanks that they have in the distribution, and so they have to do catch-up when they're able to get back on the grid. So what we are going to do is increase their generation so that they can actually operate all their processes during this time. Also, there's safety reasons involved with that. Right now, they have to shut down the whole plant, someone has to go out there and trip it over from the main grid to their generators, and so you can imagine, you know, wet, storm, you know, all kinds of things that can happen when that, when they had to do that. These, the new generators will actually be able to be done automatically. And then the third project is an extension of the parallel 36-inch line, I'm going to put in the system between Berryville and Green Forest. Basically, we need to get more water down to this area, the largest, the two biggest users are Green Forest and Harrison, so we've got to keep the water coming down, and so that's another project, about a mile, I think, 36-inch. So, I'm here tonight to ask, to pass, or sit on the full council about a resolution that would allow us to increase the indebtedness and move on with these capital improvement projects. Now, the reason it's not going to be raising our rates as long as interest rates stay where they are today, is that we are going to refinance some of the district's existing bonds, extend the life of those bonds, and they'll allow us to fund these projects. Interest rates right now are very low, and so not only is it a win that they get to actually reduce some of the interest rates that they have on existing bonds, but it also gives them the funds to do these projects. Now, if the interest rates stay the same way they are now, they will be able to almost be the same payment that they're paying now for the bonds today, even with being able to do this. There is a little bit of an increase, but they are able to absorb that in-house. So that's how we're going to fund these projects. So anyway.
I'm making a motion to move the resolution on.
Second.
For the council.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
We apologize for the two-hour wait.
Oh, that's all right. This is part of.
Somebody had to be at the bottom.
That's right. You're looking at it. I appreciate it, you all, have a good evening.
You too, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have a vote? We have a motion and a second, did we vote?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to read through this next little item that's popped up on the agenda. Jeff and I talked about it ad nauseam on the phone, he wasn't real sure what tripped the trigger, other than maybe it was Diamond City City Council. I thought it looked more like Nancy Pelosi and Donald Trump myself, by reading through it. But apparently, municipal league would like for every council that's a member of the Arkansas Municipal League to adopt a code of conduct ordinance. And have y'all had a chance to read through the ordinance? It's actually, it's actually a pretty good checklist. And honestly, do we meet, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Mayor, you, Jeff, the department heads, looking at the checklist that was provided in this, do we meet all these items, all the checklists?
I believe we did, so. I believe we did.
I think we exceeded.
Open for opinion on some of them, but I believe so.
Well, reading down through it, I felt pretty comfortable. I mean, it breaks it down all by the department heads, purchasing, budgeting, record-keeping, it looked.
We have to be respectful to others.
The civility part, I question, I really have an issue with the civility part, but I'm just kidding. But any comments from the committee? I would take a motion to move this to full council, or we go ahead and approve the council's code of conduct ordinance.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? I'm done.
You know, Bill, that's probably another thing, when it gets down there, we can go through the three readings, because there would be no reason to extend that into three months.
The code of conduct ordinance?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we could go, I.
I think, like you said on the other, there's times for those, and then there's times that's just kind of.
For the lack of a better term, this is basically making sure you got your backs on, I mean, that's really what it comes down to, I was looking through the checklist. It's a good thing, it's something that, you know, I'm sure that there was a cause of a council somewhere in the state, or some other council, and the municipal league picked up on it, went, it's a great idea, so.
Yeah, I think we only have one item left, folks, and I'm going to let Jeff explain that.
Just a little bit of housekeeping on the, you guys voted, or in the budget, to fund the economic development contract with the chamber for this next year. And it was discussed last year when you were talking about the different payments and things like that, but we don't have it documented in the minutes, the council authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
So move.
So it was discussed, but we just never, we need to make it official in the meeting.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. Anyone opposed? We're done. And anybody in the audience want to, want to make any comments before we air tonight? Okay, thank you all very much for coming, and we'll see you in three weeks. Three weeks. Jason, you're late.
That's right, Jason, you're late.
Great time to say.